Ninth to order. Just a second here. And we will begin with... Roll call.
Counselor Kaiser, absent. Guest Counselor Teagan.
Present.
Counselor Anderson.
Here.
Counselor Nanki.
Yes.
Counselor McCoy.
Here.
Counselor Osick.
Here.
Counselor Hoy.
Here.
Counselor Lewis.
Here.
Mayor Bennett.
Here. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Counselor McCoy.
I move approval of additions to the agenda.
Second.
Or revisions. There are none?
Just revisions.
Yeah.
We know what you mean.
Okay. And that is revision to information item 6C. Had some attachments added.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. It's an opportunity for the council to make comments. Counselor McCoy.
At the opportunity, and I've done this for a number of years, to attend the chef's night out function yesterday afternoon at the convention center. They had 700 people there. And it's a fundraiser for the Marion-Pope Food Share. And if you haven't been there, I highly recommend it. It's great fun. You have all these restaurants showing up, showing off their best wares. And you're winding around between that and wineries and desserts. And I walked out of there four pounds heavier. Very full. No dinner that night.
But happy.
It was a wonderful crowd for a great event. Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Cook.
I just wanted to thank my colleagues and thank the mayor for the Safe Routes to School proclamation and Child Friendly Cities Resolution. I really look forward to the next steps as we enter the budget cycle coming up and finishing our strategic planning process, working with staff and counselors on that.
Well, thank you for bringing it, Counselor Cook. Anyone else? I had the chance to give out the mayor's trophy in the North Salem-South Salem game to South Salem, which won the game. It was real exciting. We're hoping there'll be a mayor's trophy game in the future, but North is going down to 5A and South will stay in 6A in the OSAA league. So we'll see when this happens again. But it was a really enjoyable evening out there. So... Okay, anyone else? Alrighty. Mr. Commander.
I'd like to take the opportunity to formally introduce to some members of the council and the public our new community development director, Norman Wright. Norman came to us from Adams County, Colorado, where he was the Director of Economic and Community Development, has great experience in planning. And we're excited to have him as part of our staff. Also want to thank Lisa Anderson Ogleby for the tremendous job that she did as interim community development director and thank her for all the additional work and hours that she put in. And she did a very fine job managing the department until Norm's arrival. And we're excited for doing great things.
Great. Yeah, good job. Okay. Alrighty, we'll move on then to proclamations. I need to have Susan Kurzilias, Hassan Harvaj, Dorothy Peterson, Judy Ramos, and Dustin Wood come up to receive the proclamation. Whereas Salem means peace and the government and residents of Salem have committed themselves to making this city a welcoming, peaceful, and supportive community where people of all ethnic, racial, and religious backgrounds can be safe, happy, and thrive. And whereas October 22, 2017, marks the 200th anniversary of the birth of Bahala, the prophet founder of the Baha'i. And whereas Bahala called for the elimination of prejudice of all kinds, religious, racial, economic, nationalistic, ethnic, political, but prejudice remains prevalent and increasingly more divisive. And whereas since 1951, the Baha'is of Salem have worked to apply this vision of the oneness of humanity to the material and spiritual life of Salem, collaborating with others through efforts to promote unity and to serve their fellow residents, including participation in the oneness coalition and recently in bridging the gap. And whereas the Baha'is of Salem and their families, friends, neighbors, and colleagues are commemorating this bicentenary along with Baha'is across the United States and around the world, now therefore I Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, do hereby proclaim October 22, 2017, as a day honoring the oneness of humanity and urge all residents to promote in themselves and in their relations with others those qualities and attributes that will help bring about the recognition of the oneness of humanity, to embrace diversity and to work for unity in our community. Son Chuck Bennett, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. Did you want to say?
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. On behalf of the Baha'is of Salem, we appreciate your bringing the attention of the public to this need in our community.
Well, and congratulations on 200 years of activity in your faith and for bringing it to Salem. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, we have no presentations. We have some folks signed up for public comment. Mr. City Attorney.
I just noted that on the public comment, everyone has signed up for item 6, which I believe is an information report. That particular item has been called up, has been appealed. So it will come before you on a hearing for redetermination. So all their comments are technically ex parte, which means you shouldn't be communicating back with them. So if you would just please limit discussion. You can just hear their comments. We'll include this portion of the council meeting in the record on the appeal. But please don't have a back and forth with them on specifics regarding the application.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I didn't get which item. Is it 6? What?
I believe it's 6C.
6C, okay. Thank you very much.
Everyone understood? Okay, great. So we will begin our public comment with Virginia Barker. Virginia, and this applies to everyone who's going to be doing this. You have three minutes. The orange light will go, or the yellow light will go on at two minutes. You have one minute left. When it turns red, just stop talking and I won't interrupt you then. And we'll go over there.
Thank you. I'm Virginia Barker. I reside at 3010 Star Court Northeast Salem, Oregon, Mayor Bennett and City Councilors. I am here to address the safety issues of a proposed apartment complex at 3010 Silverton Road. The planning commission approved the aforementioned in their September 19 meeting. The size and location of this complex pose multiple problems for the Lansing neighborhood in which it will be located. First and foremost are safety issues. There is one driveway serving this large complex that is directly across Lansing Street from Sedona Street. Those residents on Sedona will find it very difficult to turn left onto Lansing during heavy school commute hours, requiring them to go out of their way to access Silverton Road. In addition, an alternative of turning left onto Silverton Road from Sedona is very much a safety hazard as well. The city engineer addressed driveway approach in his findings, and I take exception to some of his findings. The driveway does not facilitate safe and efficient movement of vehicles. He also indicated that the transportation system provides for the safe, orderly, and efficient circulation of traffic into and out of the proposed development, and negative impacts to the transportation system are mitigated adequately. If there are parking places for 151 vehicles in the complex, how can this not have a negative impact on the traffic flow on Lansing Avenue? In addition, the findings indicate the driveway approach does not create a known traffic hazard and will provide for safe turning movements for access to subject property. The driveway approach does create hazards, as I have previously indicated. This complex is located approximately one block from the elementary school and a middle school is located down the street. There are many people who drive their children to these schools, but there are also many walkers. There are buses delivering children to both schools in addition to the vehicles and walkers. Currently, traffic backups occur in the mornings between 7:15 and 8:15 and in the afternoons between 2:00 and 2:45, which can result in 10 to 15-minute delays in moving along Lansing Avenue. The morning times would probably be when a substantial number of apartment residents are trying to exit the complex, creating even more of a traffic jam. Children and adults accompanying them would be at risk when trying to cross the street. The driveway does result in significant adverse impacts to adjacent properties. If you try to turn left from Silverton Road onto Lansing, they try to beat the light and crashes will happen. The water table in this area is very high and the subject piece of property frequently has standing water on it. Covering the property with so much imperviable surface will create a hazard for motorists as water will have no place to go. Lansing Neighborhood Association and NESKA both indicated in their neighborhood plan, which is under development, that they wanted this to be left as a small-scale neighborhood serving retail businesses. I would request you councilors to seriously consider these concerns and to initiate review or call up of the decision for a public hearing. It does not contribute to the livability of the Lansing community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Virginia. Patty Tipton.
Good evening, Mayor and council's members and staff. I'm the chair. My name is Patty Tipton. I'm the Chair of Lansing Neighborhood Association, and I live on 3240 Hamill Street Northeast. And I live just half a block or two from Lansing and Silverton Road. And our concern as a neighborhood association was the following. Number one, this developer who decided to build these apartments on this land never came to our neighborhood association and asked what we wanted for our neighborhood. We consider this a very rude thing to do. Number two, the fact that 96 apartments means that there could be 192 to 278 parking spaces needed within that 96 apartment buildings. Because people generally have two to three cars per household or more. And that parking in a half, and I have no idea where there's a half a car out there that gets driven around. Also, that means about four to five people per apartment house, which means I added about 288 more children that would be crossing the street from this apartment complex to Washington and Waldo School. That's a lot of kids to worry about. Already, there is an hour of bumper-to-bumper traffic on Lansing to Silverton Road in the mornings and afternoons, and that includes buses, cars, and people. Now you want to add another 196 more cars and 288 more children? That is a lot of people on that one little area. You are asking to put these people at risk for car accidents. And now I want, the next thing I want to do, I want to ask the fire department to say, hey, this is a problem because you are putting people at risk because of this building complex. The fire department, I don't think, was asked what could be done to make the safety of this neighborhood. If a fire truck has to get into this 96 unit and with one driveway, they won't be able to because there will be so many cars trying to get out because there is a fire. The police will not be able to get into this apartment complex because there will be problems getting out of this parking lot. The last thing I want you to think about is the number of children. Shouldn't they be your top priority and top concern? Do you want to see a child get killed on the street? I don't. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Claudine Shaw.
My name is Claudine Shaw. I live at 3040 Laux Court Northeast. I came primarily to support Patty and Virginia and the Lansing neighborhood. I live in the Lansing neighborhood. I can testify to the backup of the traffic. I live five or six blocks away from the schools, and it is not unusual for me to come and have to wait in line 15 to 20 minutes before I can get into my turn to get into my house. So I just am in support of this being cut down, not as many people being allowed to be right there at the corner of Silverton Road and Lansing.
Great. Thank you very much. Joyce Judy.
Good evening. My name is Joyce Judy. I'm from Ward 5, which is the North Gate neighborhood, which is directly across the street from the new proposed complex. I thank you, Mayor Bennett and councilors, for the opportunity to speak today. I have already written you about a recent incident that occurred on Silverton Road in which there was a car crash and a mother and a three-year-old kid were severely injured. And this occurred as a result of a car that was speeding through the light who hit a car that was turning left on Lansing. I am making a recommendation to you that you put in a left-turn light, not a lane, but a left-turn light on Lansing. This would at least preclude people from running through that light and hitting people. The other thing I would propose is at the entrance to the complex that there be a crosswalk that goes across that with flashing lights to cause the traffic to have to stop when students or public are trying to cross the street. There's no other way for children in that complex to cross the street safely. You know, as has already been mentioned, there is a lot of traffic there now. I pass there every day, virtually, and turning, there's a lineup of traffic along that street. So, you know, yes, putting in a left-turn light might create additional traffic, but it would also create safety for the children that are trying to get to school in the mornings and get home at night. There's a bus stop on 30th Avenue, right in front of the middle of that complex, and children are going to be getting off that bus, going up to Silverton and Lansing, and going down to school. So I'm just trying to ask that you please make that safer for the children. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Questions? No? No. Anyone else want to comment on anything on the agenda except for public hearings? Okay, great. And I would want to remind everyone that this will be brought to a public hearing, so there'll be another opportunity to testify probably in the next four weeks. Month? Month and a half? Month? Yeah? Okay, month. Okay, Counselor McCoy, the consent agenda.
Should I move approval of the consent calendar?
Second.
Want to go ahead?
Yes. The consent calendar night consists of the following things. We've got the minutes of the September 25 council meeting. Item, under action items, there are no resolutions under action items. 3.3A, authorizes the city manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement for the acquisition of property for the site of the proposed City of Salem Police Facility. Under 3.3B, license agreement with Crown Castle Corporation with certain amendments to it, subject to conditions set forth in this report for the installation, operation, and maintenance of city radio system equipment at the Crown Castle Communication Facility for the city's railroad system project. Next is instituting a Class 1 vacation of Portage Road Northwest and Paradise Court Northwest, and directs the city manager to set a public hearing date to consider the petition initiated vacation. We have then an application to fund street improvements on McGilchrist Street Southeast through the federal Tiger Grant Program. And finally, we have federal funding, we authorize the city manager to submit applications for federal bridge funding allocated by ODOT to replace the Liberty Street Northeast Bridge over Mill Creek and the Airport Road Southeast Bridge over Shelton Ditch.
Any discussion? Counselor Anderson.
I first want to note that I didn't pull anything this time, but I also, I'm very pleased to see the Tiger Grant and Director Fernandez. I'm looking forward to a successful grant so we can take care of McGilchrist, which is a real problem. And I'm also happy about the bridges that are needed to be fixed.
I sent a very powerful letter to Secretary Chow today asking for that money.
Well, good. I'm sure she will pay attention to you.
I almost put a note on it, just saying, would you like to call back and tell me all this? Yeah.
Just to build on what Counselor Anderson said, I'm too looking forward and very happy to see the Tiger Grants included on the action items. I think it's a good time and a good project.
Yes. Counselor Lewis.
Yes, just thanks, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to disclose I need to abstain from the agenda, item 3.1A, which is the minutes from the September 25 meeting because I was not here.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. And we will move on to public hearings.
The city council will now conduct a public hearing concerning a resolution establishing solid waste collection rates and charges and rescinding Resolution Number 2016-30. Individuals testifying must provide their name and address or ward. Individuals are limited to three minutes of testimony. A yellow light will appear at the podium when one minute remains, and a red light will appear when your time is expired. Please conclude your testimony when the red light appears.
Go ahead.
Hey, there it is. Good evening, Mayor. Members of council, my name is Ryan Zink. I am your franchise administrator for the City of Salem. I want to thank you for the opportunity to share with you this proposal regarding solid waste collection rates. This evening's public hearing is being conducted in accordance with Salem Revised Code, Chapter 47, also known as the City's Solid Waste Management Code, which provides that city council is responsible for establishing rates and may do so by service or zone. There are two zones within Salem, the Marion County Zone and the Polk County Zone. Authority is also grounded by Oregon Revised Statutes 459 and 459A. These statutes grant local governments' primary responsibility for planning solid waste management and issuing franchises and letting, excuse me, and setting rates for solid waste collection services.
Ryan, could you pull that mic up just a little bit?
One more?
Yeah, just enough to kind of catch your voice.
Is that better?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, I'll lean over a little bit. Six foot five.
I know.
I got to come down over here. One last thing on the slide is that through this process, the city plays a similar role as the Oregon Utility, Oregon, excuse me, Oregon Public Utility Commission does in setting rates for gas and electric companies. Moving right along, the recommendation for you this evening is to approve the proposed solid waste management service rates effective January 1, 2018, and January 1, 2019. This comes to you in the form of Resolution Number 2017-45. Exhibit A lists the rates that would go into effect January 1, 2018, while Exhibit B lists the rates that would go into effect January 1, 2019. Salem Revised Code 47-099 establishes the criteria used in making a decision of whether proposed rates are just reasonable and adequate. The primary objective of the rate review process is to establish rates that balance the cost of service to the customer and allow the city's six franchised haulers a sufficient operating margin to maintain operations in the city. One such measure of determining whether the balance is being achieved is return on revenue. This is a calculation that essentially reflects a pre-tax margin, or, excuse me, yeah, pre-tax margin of profit. Factors include current and projected revenues, expenses, and equipment costs are used to calculate a reasonable operating margin. Many jurisdictions that franchise their solid waste operations use return on revenue as an instrument for adjusting rates. As an example, Beaverton and Gresham have both codified a targeted return on revenue for solid waste providers. Historically, the City of Salem has set rates to allow solid waste providers a pre-tax return of revenue of 10%, targeting between 8 and 12. This is consistent with the targeted, with the return targeted by other jurisdictions. In July 2017, Mid Valley Garbage and Recycling, a association representing Salem's six franchised haulers approached the city with the rate increase proposal and provided data to substantiate the requested increase. Following this request, the city contacted Chris Bell and Associates to review the haulers' financial statements and to perform a cost of service analysis. The city has engaged the services of Mr. Bell for several rate reviews, and he is one of the few experts in Oregon and Washington when it comes to matters of solid waste management and rate modeling. To summarize the process involved with the cost of service analysis, here are the steps. First, reported revenues and expenses are reviewed and tested for reasonableness to ensure accuracy in relation to the number of customers served, number and size of bins collected, and the predicted tonnage of waste disposed. Next, future revenues and expenses are estimated using projected growth and inflationary cost drivers. And finally, a projected pre-tax return on revenue is calculated for each zone, and the proposed rate adjustments are evaluated to see whether or not they are necessary. As part of this rate-setting process, staff proposes approving rates on a biannual cycle, adopting rates for the next two years. Using a biannual rate-setting process allows for four things. First of all, it allows for more gradual increases to rates that are more closely tied to inflation. There's more certainty in the rates. There are savings in time and financial resources dedicated to the rate review process. And the solid waste rate-setting process will occur on alternate years from the wastewater and stormwater rate-setting process, which occurs on even years. Here we show the factors driving this rate proposal, and they are relatively low, increases to the overall cost of doing business. Fuel is expected to remain low in 2018. However, to allow for volatility in this market, a 5% inflation factor is used for 2019. Labor and medical insurance factors represent the terms negotiated in labor contracts. And while most of the other expenses are tied to general inflation. Finally, just to note that offsetting revenue from the sale of recycling material continues to remain low and is uncertain. Historically, that revenue has helped to offset the cost of providing garbage services. This has not been the case in recent years and is not expected to improve in the near future. This slide demonstrates the results of the cost of service analysis, showing the pre-tax return on revenue last year in 2016 and projected revenues for 2017 through 2019. The return on revenue for Salem's haulers within the, oh, excuse me, and this is all, of course, taking into consideration the factors we saw in the previous slide. The return on revenue for Salem's haulers within the two zones are broken out separately because there are notable differences in rates and variations in cost drivers used to calculate the return on revenue, such as disposal fees and transportation costs. Without the proposed increases, such, excuse me, without the proposed increases, the pre-tax return on revenue in Marion County Zone is estimated to be near the bottom of the target range of 8 to 12% in 2018 and fall below the range in 2019. While the Polk County Zone is projected to have a 10% return on revenue in 2018, the projection for 2019 falls again below that targeted range. While the return on revenue for a given zone and year may be within the target range, or even for those outside the target range, the lines of business within that, such as residential carts, commercial containers, or drop boxes, may be out of balance and individually... residential carts, commercial containers, or drop boxes, may be out of balance and individually outside of the target range. The city works with the haulers to ensure the balance, to ensure the balance between the residential rates and the commercial rates remain stable, one not subsidizing the other. This is important because each hauler in Salem serves a different mix of customers. Some haulers have a higher number of commercial customers, while others serve more residential customers. This is why, as you'll see in the next slide, that different increases are requested for each line of business. Here we see the proposed rate increases for roll cart, container, and drop box rental services. The full list of services is provided in the exhibits to the resolution, and of course, this is for 2018. Proposed increases to roll cart services impact not only residents, but also multifamily units and commercial businesses. If approved, the rates for cart services would increase by approximately 3.1 percent in Marion County with no overall increase in Polk County. Commercial container services would have no increase in Marion County, but would have a 3.7 percent increase in Polk County. And drop box rentals, which are receptacles with intermittent collection and disposal, are proposed to increase 4.3 percent and 4.5 percent in Marion and Polk Counties respectively. Finally, the proposed increase for low-volume generators of medical waste is 24.6 percent. This is primarily due to a decrease in high-volume utilization, which has shifted more fixed costs to the low-volume service. And here we see the proposed increases to be effective January 1, 2019, as displayed in Exhibit B of the resolution. Please also note that no increase for medical waste is proposed for 2019. Further analysis is required before making a recommendation, and you should expect to see this come before you, probably by next fall. So the big question is, how much would my bill go up? This slide shows the impact of the proposed increases to the subscribers of cart services in Marion County Zone, so we're looking at residential cart service here. The majority of those customers subscribe to the 35-gallon service, which you see in the box at the second, the line second from the bottom. And as these figures on the slide represent two months of service, because most customers are on a bi-monthly bill, a subscriber of the 35-gallon service in Marion County would see an increase of $9.60 for the year, which equates to 80 cents per month, with a total annual increase of $7.20 in 2019. This is the same slide now for Polk County. While no increase is recommended for residential, the 20-gallon and the 35-gallon rates were rebalanced, which provides more differentiation between those services. This is in a manner similar to what we see in Marion County. Previously, there was only, I believe it was a 30-cent difference per month between the 20- and 35-gallon services. What we've done here is the 20-gallon cart service was lowered by $2 per month, while the 35-gallon service was increased by 25 cents per month. As the slide, as these, let's see here, as these figures again represent two months of service, the subscriber of the 35-gallon service in Polk County would see an increase of $3 a year in both 2018 and 2019. So just briefly, I'll show you some of the history for the residential rates. Again, this is that 35-gallon roll cart service that most people in Salem subscribe to. Aside from the general increases that we've seen throughout the years, going back to July of 2004, there was service added, the mixed organics, in July of 2010. There was an increase of the franchise fee from 5 percent to 7 percent in July, excuse me, in January 2015. Here this last year, in October 2016, we did see a significant increase, particularly for Marion County, and those rates due to the increase in disposal fees and a substantial decrease in the offsetting revenue from the sale of recycled material. And then, of course, you see the trajectory of the proposed rates that are before you When comparing the proposed rates before you, we, excuse me, for the residential monthly rate for 35-gallon cart, we compare those to the neighboring cities and those with comparable service levels. The rate in Polk County remains within the middle of the range, as seen in the graph. However, the rate within Marion County stays towards the top. What you see on this slide are current rates for other cities, which will likely increase following their own rate reviews. While not normally listed on this slide, I wanted to provide some other cities in Marion County that are experiencing similar rates. For instance, Woodburn, for that 35-gallon service, is at $26.12 a month. Staten is at $27.40. Silverton is over $29. And Wilsonville, outside of Marion County, but just north of us, is at $26.37 per month. As additional context for this comparison, though, haulers in Salem do provide a number of services not provided in many other communities, such as curbside food waste collection, along with curbside recycling of motor oil, antifreeze, latex paint, cooking oil, and household batteries. So finally, I wanted to just talk about a couple enhancements to the waste hauling, waste management services in Salem. First of all, the low-income discount program has been improved. We recognize through the last rate review process that we need to improve and expand this program. We've expanded it to include both seniors, 65-plus, and disabled heads of household. The low-income threshold now is on a sliding scale based on the household size, and it's been moved from a fixed discount, which was $2, to a 10% discount of your residential bill. This is also tied directly to the city's wastewater rate assistance program, so if a resident qualifies for that program, they will also qualify for a 10% discount on the residential garbage bill. And as I mentioned earlier, the rates in Polk County for the 20-gallon and the 35-gallon services were rebalanced to provide more differentiation before those, or between those two services. So in conclusion, having performed the required analysis, using the criteria identified in the Solid Waste Management Code, staff finds the rates, the rates proposed to be just, reasonable, and adequate. Therefore, staff recommends that city council adopt Resolution Number 2017 dash four-five, establishing new solid waste management service rates. If adopted, the city, excuse me, if adopted by city council, these rates would go into effect January 1, 2018, as listed in Exhibit A. Furthermore, rates would go into effect January 1, 2019, as listed in Exhibit B to the resolution. Finally, all subscribers would receive a 30-day notice of the rate changes from their hauler prior to the effective date. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions following public testimony. Also, just wanted to mention that we have some representatives here from the Garbage Association, and they're, they'd be happy to answer questions as well. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. We'll go then to the public hearing, public comment portion. Thank you. And we'll have a chance after, after that to ask questions here. Estelle Harland?
Thank you, Counselor Bennett, and, uh, Mayor Bennett and council. I'm Estelle Harland. I'm a solid waste management consultant for Mid Valley Garbage and Recycling Association, and have been doing this for about 35 years for the industry. You've heard the very detailed process that we've gone through this year, and that has been traditionally our process for confirming cost of service in the city of Salem. Last year, when we were before you, we were looking at a really large disposal increase, 30 percent on solid waste, 45 percent on mixed organics, and recycling markets were We're not here for disposal this year. We're here because of one reason, and that is that inflationary costs, and that's what we're asking to be covered, inflationary costs have increased. So now we're looking at a 15-month span since last increase, October 1 of 2016, and the one that we're asking to be effective on January 1 of 2018. Our current increase request is due to inflation, and that has created the need. Recycling markets are also still declining. They're at negative or somewhere below negative in what we've, what we're getting to offset our cost of recycling. Historically, over the last 35 years, as I've worked with this industry, about 10 percent of our cost gets covered by recycling markets. Now we're not even getting that 10 percent. So that, that is another pressure on us. We are not increasing our profits. Please let me make that very clear. We're not asking to increase our profits. We're simply asking for an increase to cover our increased cost of doing business. We have calculated, and we support the biannual plan that the city has described to you. We have calculated 12 months of increase in figuring what we would need for 2019. So any delay would affect 2019. Just as we had no control last year over disposal, we have no control over this increased inflation. But we understand customers also sometimes feel like they don't have control over their costs of doing, of garbage service. So we're going to proactively propose that we come back in three to six months and offer a 20-gallon every other week service for those who are already on 20-gallon, can't lower their prices anymore. We want to try to give them an opportunity to indeed lower their costs, still some more if they could do so. And so we are pleased to serve you. We love working in this city. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Estelle. Are there any questions? Counselor Nicky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome back again.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Counselor.
Question on the medical waste. There was a recommendation to hold off, but in kind of a similar vein, on fuel costs, it was just, instead of one and a half, it shot to five in 2019. Wouldn't it be appropriate to wait and kind of see what those rates are similar?
Well, they are very, the 20, the fuel costs are very volatile. We're already finding that our, what we calculated, we calculated low. And so we could cut it, we could cut it a little, you know, we could nickel and dime that, but let me just add to what I said about recycling, about the recycling. We did not, we did not calculate in a dime or a penny for the losses that we're taking on recycling. So over, over the years, over the years, the way we have, the way that we have calculated in our composite is to let recycling markets flow wherever they may and not try to calculate that one, because it is so volatile, that, don't try to calculate the losses in, but we know that we're taking losses. Fuel is volatile, but somewhat less volatile. You're taking less of a risk. We're taking the larger risk on the recycling markets. We're taking a small risk already on fuel. I mean, we could cut it down a little bit, but we think that this is what we need.
And my question was more just in the respect that because fuel is volatile, say it went up to four bucks a gallon, and next year, I'm assuming you would come back and say, we need to adjust because of this. Why not just wait until we see what the fuel prices?
Well, we're trying, we're trying to do a balancing act here, the way that you also do with some of your other utilities, and that's why we're, we're making some assumptions for 2019. This is different from what we've done in the past. We agree. But we support it.
Our, our rates are tied to something as volatile as fuel, though, and so.
Yeah. It doesn't make, it doesn't make a huge difference in what we're asking. We're asking for a very small amount now, and it won't, it wouldn't make much difference in the, I mean, fuel is just one factor, that we have wages, we have, you know, medical, many, many other things.
If I may, just one last, what is the percentage of expense that comprises the fuel?
What is, what, you mean the dollar amount?
No. What percentage of expenses is fuel?
Oh, the, our CPA is here for, we'll get you that.
It's around 3 percent.
Okay. So it doesn't make, it doesn't move the needle very much.
As compared to healthcare?
Right, well, or as, yeah, yeah, or as compared to labor or equipment expenses and so forth. Yes, it doesn't move it much.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, and thank you for coming down. I remember you being here a while back to talk about the same thing. Couple of questions. First one is, how many people use the 20-gallon service? I don't, I think if you could express it in percentages, that would be greater. If you know how to X number of customers, what number of that actually use the 20-gallon service?
Would you just tell me what, in your, in your routes, what they are? It's probably representative.
Another way to say it is, how many people would benefit by this?
Eight to 10 percent.
Eight to 10 percent.
Okay, and then not all of those eight to 10 percent would say, I could use this every other month, I still, they still might need it every month.
No, no, and there are probably, you know, probably the more important question that people should be asking is, is, are they really at the level of service they need to be? I mean, they may be at a 65, and they could take a 35. They may be at a 35, and they could take a 20 now. But for those, we have heard, we have just heard, that there are some who are concerned that they're already at 20, they can't go down anymore, and we're just offering, we're just offering to come back.
And then, my understanding is, your organization consists of six companies? Six?
Yes, seven, well, seven, there are seven total, but essentially six.
Oh, right. And as I understand it, too, the, the financial figures that you showed to Mr. Bell, that he then used in his calculation to help the city, those were aggregate for all six entities?
Correct, but he also gets the individual.
I know he gets it, but we don't get that.
That's correct.
So would it be safe to say that of those six companies, some are operated at a higher profit margin than others do?
There's a variance, and some of it depends on their customer mix.
Yeah, and so the figures we've seen are the average figures, which, of course, would mean there's got to be some sort of variance between the high and the low.
But, but our franchisees, your franchisees, the haulers, have to live within that average. So if they're, I mean, you understand, I'm sure, and so if they're, if they're one of the lower, they don't get to come up.
Right, right.
So they have to live within the average.
I understand, and I also understand something like, if you're providing service on Lancaster Boulevard, you can make pretty quick stops up and down, but if you're out in some more rural area within the city, you've got more expenses in between. So I understand all those things going through.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure if you're the best person to answer this or not, so please direct me elsewhere if you're not, but I understand you have a, an on-demand service that might be a lower rate. Could you tell me a little bit more about that and what that?
It's an on-call, it's an on-call, and you simply call in and say, I need pickup. And so you don't have to have every week pickup.
And that's available today?
It's available today.
Thank you. I have one more, totally, on a different topic. You haul all of our garbage to the, to the Covanta burner, is that correct?
That's correct.
And do you do, and I'm talking about on the Marion County side, not the Polk County side.
On the Marion County side, yes.
And do you do that because that's, you choose to do that, or is there some requirement that you do that?
There is a state statute.
So there's a state statute that where the county controls where our garbage goes?
It's called flow control.
Okay, so we couldn't decide today to go somewhere else with our garbage?
You could not.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor McCoy.
Follow up on Counselor Hoy's question, and so that's why the Marion County rates are higher than the Polk County rates?
Yes, well, the, the Polk County, the, way back, we're talking about history here, before any of us, they, they, there was a negotiation for Polk County rates, and that difference has been carried through over the years.
So, but, well, has it gotten bigger because of the increase in tipping fees for, in Marion County versus where they're, are they going to Marion County, too?
Most, some of them are going to Marion County, some are, some are going to Corvallis, some are going to, they don't have flow control over, over Polk County. Some are going to, they don't have flow control over, over Polk County. But, they, they, some go to Corvallis and some go to McMinville.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Anderson.
With respect to Counselor McCoy's question about flow control, those services, the charges that the county charges for dumping fees are just, or tipping fees, I think they're called. The county just tells you, "This is what we're going to be charging you." You don't negotiate with them in any way, do you?
We don't negotiate, but it is a very public process. It's, you know, there were public, there were public hearings, for sure.
Sure. Just like this. But, before the public hearings, you're not in talking with the county, saying, "Here's what we propose," and the county might give and take. The county just says, "Here's what we think it is," based on public hearings.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
David Law.
David Lear. Sorry about that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
General Manager for Mid Valley Garbage Recycling Association. So, I'm here as a representative for the six hauling franchisees. And we're here to tell you how much we appreciate being part of this community. I'm here more just briefly. I still talked about the process. But, you know, it's easy for somebody to say, "Well, it's a franchise. They just get to do what they want." And they never think about efficiencies or how to partner to run, you know, operations at the most convenient, best for their consumers. And so, I just want to talk a little bit of history. Some of the key efficiencies have really changed in our organization or in the solid waste recycling world is the conversion from manual pickup to automated pickup. And that conversion over the last 20 years, if you think about it, has really helped keep inflation in check for us. Because, we've been able to move to automated trucks. We've been able to hire less people, have less equipment. So, we've been able to keep inflation in check. What's going to get interesting for us is we've made the conversion over the last 20 years. And, you know, we continue to make the conversion in new equipment. But, you know, what's that next great thing that's going to help us from a labor productivity side or efficiency side from route, you know, from route optimization? And then, so that leads me to number two, you know, route optimization. It's, what is route optimization? Well, for us, it's hard to hire people. Any industry right now in Oregon, West Coast. So, routing, labor itself is a model for making sure we're effective in our route operations. We do not want to be inefficient because it is, it's not easy finding people to want, come and want to do this work necessarily. So, for us as companies, we want to be efficient. Keeps our workforce to the optimal level, keeps our equipment to the optimal level. We just don't go out and buy trucks just to have more trucks because we have a franchise with the city. We're, you know, our goal is to be as efficient we can to the constituents to help keep the price down and help fight these inflationary demands. All the haulers have done their best to leverage supply chain. You know, while we still, over 50, over 51% of our supply is still all with local Salem companies. We do utilize some national accounts from some of our partners that help to benefit the whole organization. We've, you know, leveraged our fuel tanks. We've increased the size of our fuel tanks, waste oil tanks, to help drive better pricing for our consumers. We've consolidated our healthcare. We all go through the Oregon Refuge and Recycling Association so we can drive our health insurance premiums to the most competitive they can be. And then, we continue to buy low emission vehicles. You know, we've bought the organization at least 10 this year. More to be purchased in the future. And again, all this stuff is to keep the costs down, to help drive these inflationary factors out and help protect the constituents at the rate at the curb right now. So, I just wanted to share some of that from an operational perspective of what the association does to help keep this rate cost low to the consumers. And I'm available for, if there's any questions or if you ever want to stop by our facility. I'd love to have guests come out and tour. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lear. Are there any questions? Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. Thanks for your presentation. This is helpful to hear from you folks. Maybe I didn't quite understand it, but I'll use my services as an example. We used to be Allied and now we're Republic, or maybe it's the other way around. I can't remember.
That's correct.
Okay. And, and I take it Republic is a national organization that bought out Allied?
Correct.
So, of your six groups, how many are, when you said 50%, does that mean three of your groups are just local outfits and three are affiliated with national? How does that work?
Yeah, no. So, Republic, while they're one of our members, they too, they, they hire local drivers. They have local suppliers here as well. You know, they've got some discount programs through some, you know, tires or whatever, but it'll be through a Les Schwab, you know, who's still an Oregon company.
Okay, I see what you mean. You're getting your.
And having some of that benefit from them, they've offered to us, some of the other members, to use their purchasing power through local suppliers to get better pricing.
That's good. And so, in general, though, are the, of the other five, are they affiliated locally or nationally?
They're all, the others, they're all local.
Okay. And then, how do you, how do you split up the, among the six people? Who decides who gets what? Is this a bidding process, or how, how does that, that work?
As far as the service boundaries?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean, the service boundaries are in essence, it's family generations of businesses that have been, you know, and again, there's succession plans and generations that are looking to take on the existing families as they retire and move out of the business. And so, they're actually a franchised area. They're a franchised area. And Republic, who bought Allied, you know, years ago, took over that franchised area. But, there's.
Well, so, what would happen if one of the five local families says, gee, you know, Junior, the next generation doesn't want to run this company. Let's just stop our business. And I presume one of the other five might say, "Hey, here's an opportunity for us to come in and enlarge our book of business."
I don't know all the bylaws of the association because I'm relatively new, although I've been in solid waste and recycling for 25 years. There is specific in our, correct me if I'm wrong, but of the members, they all have an equal share in the association.
Okay.
And so, it doesn't matter if you're a national company. So, we make decisions locally about how we're going to service our customer. Doesn't matter that Republic is the largest. They have the same voting share at our table. So, if one of the family businesses wants to sell, there's a first right of refusal by the other family members.
Okay.
So, or the other association members.
Okay.
So, everyone's got the same right if somebody wanted to sell their.
So, if somebody stops their business, it isn't a bid to the city to get that. It's, this franchise area is already established and it.
Correct.
It is a, it is a bid or a process within your organization as to how the remaining five are going to take care of the six territory.
Correct. And if I'm a little bit.
Let me, let me just maybe clarify a bit. I'm Estelle Holland. The city has approved the franchised areas. And so, those are city-approved areas. And they will go first, first offer to, to the other members. But, they can also go outside. They, whatever happens, be it inside or outside, will have to be city-approved.
All right. So, would it be a possibility, then, if there are six and then there are five, there will now be five areas, or there will be, still be six areas, one company would be servicing two?
Essentially, that would be it.
That's what I, just the latter of what I said. Okay. Thank you.
Anymore? Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Joyce Judy.
Good evening again. My name is Joyce Judy. I'm in Ward Five. Thank you again, Mayor and Councilors, for the opportunity to speak. I live in an apartment complex, and I didn't hear anyone speak to how the funding is going to change for apartment complexes. In the last years that I have lived in my apartment complex, my landlord has raised my rate 13% on my rent. And last year, they raised my water rate by $5. Of course, I got no evidence as to how that amount was determined. And now, we're proposing a garbage increase rate. And again, I know my landlord will raise my garbage rates, but again, I'm not going to have any way of knowing how that's determined. I know that the gentleman spoke about senior discounts, but when you live in an apartment complex, how do you get a discount when you don't even get the bill? I am a senior. I live on a very limited income, and I can hardly afford additional increases in my monthly costs. The other question I would like to ask is, why do residential commercials have to bear 100% of the burden when your commercial customers are paying nothing? They get 0% increase two years in a row. So, I'd like an answer to that question as well. And that's all I have.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is Sean Nikes.
Hi, Councilors. Hi, Mayor.
Hi, Sean.
Hi. You guys are all looking good. Over the last, I was hanging out with a bunch of my friends, about 20 people, at Boone's Treasury last night. And we were talking about this very subject. And the general feeling was, didn't the rates just go up by 17%? So, we're now talking about another 3% increase on top of that. And I'm thinking of all my friends, and I can't think of anyone who's gotten a 20% raise over the last three or four years. So, that's, you know, doesn't seem like that's really where inflation is at on the income side for most people. I, I do see the garbage people here, and I think it's great that they have an association. And I can see the real troubles that they're dealing with. I mean, it sure looks like the costs, as far as health insurance goes, are driving a lot. And I wish you guys all luck with keeping it down to 10%. That seems really aggressive from what I'm seeing with a lot of the companies I'm working with. So, good on that. But, I just don't see the people here looking forward to affording ever-increasing rates. Is it going to be another 20% over the next four years, another 20% after that? And should we be going maybe to our county commissioners and seeing about going to a different place to take, do the tipping at, as opposed to always looking, always looking at just the things that we can legislatively do here inside of this body? That's it. That's all I got. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much. Suzanne Kaltwasser.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. I, prior to this, as.
Am I even pronouncing your name right?
Pardon me?
You said Madam Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
I don't know.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I live in Ward Eight. I, I emailed to you a copious quantities of materials. And I hope that you take the time to look through that. I think there's some very important information. The questions that you're asking tonight are very good. And I suspect that if you read those documents, you'd have a lot more questions. I'm basically opposed to the increase, not because of the haulers. They obviously do a good job and deserve to make a reasonable profit. But, because the underlying tipping fee from Marion County, I think, needs to be looked at. Whether or not you can do that tonight is probably asking too much. And that's why I was hoping that I would stimulate enough interest on your part to perhaps do a work session on this issue. Marion County is going to be signing or needing to sign another contract with Covanta for the incinerator. I believe it's this next year or the year after. And I think that it behooves you to have a lot more insight into what they're doing and so forth. Not because you want to interfere in another jurisdiction, but because you're their biggest customers. And you have the most opportunity, I think, to become aware of what they're doing and why they're doing it. And because, and it impacts, impacts then the fees that you pass through and on. The Neighborhood Association for Scan asked for an extension. My Neighborhood Association didn't get a chance to, which is East Lancaster, didn't get a chance to really discuss this at any length because the staff report wasn't out. And we've heard some additional information from the haulers or association. I think that is important. So, hopefully, you'll either leave the record open or you'll give consideration to the fact that neighborhood associations would, would like to have an opportunity to look at this further going forward. So, with that, if there's any questions.
Okay. Great. Thanks, Suzanne. Are there any questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to testify that hasn't had an opportunity to sign up? Councilor Commissioner.
Thank you very much. I'm Janet Carlson, Marion County Commissioner. I live at 4560 Patriot Court Southeast in Salem. Been there since 1988. So, I am a Salem resident. I just wanted to just, I've been reading on Facebook and following what's been going on in the newspaper and just wanted to make a few points tonight. And then, also was here to listen. And if there are technical questions, be happy to go back and get the answers for those from Marion County and provide it to the council. First point I wanted to make is that we have in Marion County an award-winning solid, integrated solid waste system. And I would invite you at any time to come to tour the Covanta facility, the transfer stations where we process the ash and so on. We actually won a national award. We came in second in the nation on our solid waste system. We thought we should come in first, but someplace in Florida came in first, I guess. Secondly, on flow control, we believe it's essential, that state statute, to be able to direct where the waste goes for us and for Metro. We're the two areas that have that flow control. Otherwise, in some other parts of the nation, you, you have five or six garbage trucks coming down your street and, because everybody can choose their own garbage hauler. So, it is much more efficient here in Marion County. Third, the tipping fees or disposal fees, as you have heard, those went up last year. It's the first time since 1992, which then speaks to doing regular increases rather than waiting from 1992 until 2016. Ferris Metals, as Estelle alluded to, the value of those has gone down 93%. The electrical revenues, the value of electricity has gone down 66%. So, we have been facing some huge budget issues. We have cut staff. We have cut programs. We have cut contracts. We have cut grants. We don't have a grant program anymore through our Solid Waste Management Advisory Council. I do want to express, and this wasn't talked about here tonight, but we do not use any of the tipping fees in the County General Fund or for any capital projects, if that's something that you have heard. The only dollars that are allowed by our ordinance to go into the General Fund are excess electrical revenues, which when we got $6 million a year, we did $4 million three years in a row to pay for Courthouse Square. That's the only county building where we used excess of electrical revenues. And now, if you want to define excess, we went from $6 million to $1 million. We don't have excess electrical revenues. All of the buildings that we have been working on, Health Department Building, the Juvenile Department Building, and the Sheriff's Building are paid for with borrowed funds or our capital improvement projects. And I would just say, I guess finally, that with the, as a Marion County Commissioner, when these projects come to us, we also get the same kind of very detailed information that you do. And we have supported increases for inflationary costs for the haulers, for those areas outside the Salem city limits, which does include about 40,000 people in the East Salem, North and South. So, I believe I covered everything, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there any questions? Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner, for being here. I appreciate it. The information was informative. This is a new area for me and not something I know a lot about. So, I'm trying to quickly educate myself. But, I'm sure you can appreciate our, one of our difficulties in that we, you know, Salem straddles two counties. So, it's not just Marion County, but we also, so we have, we sort of have this internal equity issue where if you live on one side of the river, you pay a much lesser fee than if you live on the, on this side of the river. And so, I'm just curious, I appreciate your comments on flow control, but I'm, I'm just wondering, can you offer us any, any words of wisdom or relief or as we, as we struggle to deal with that issue as we straddle into two counties?
I would say, Counselor Hoy, that it's not necessarily, I don't believe it's necessarily flow control that is the issue. I mean, we have, as we mentioned, an integrated solid waste system. We actually collect the zip code numbers of people that come over and use the transfer station on the Marion County side that drop off garbage and so on. There are a lot of people that have 97304 as a zip code that come across the river and use our services because they're not readily available on the Polk County side. So, you are getting an enhanced level of service on the Marion County side. Those decisions to have that integrated system were back in the 1980s. When you talk about history, Randy Frankie was the primary mover and shaker in getting that waste-to-energy facility. So, that's a long time ago. He was a county commissioner, I think, for 24 years. I took his seat, and I've been here 15 years now, going on 16. So, kind of hard to undo that. We are at maximum capacity at the Covanta facility now. So, we are making some very We are at maximum capacity at the Covanta facility now, so we are making some very significant decisions as a board of commissioners. The contract, I think there was a question, it is up in 2019. We have hired a couple consultants, one, an attorney that figures out electrical revenue kinds of things, and also a couple consultants that understand kind of capacity issues and technology issues. There, I think the best opportunity for us to really work together on the Marion County side is through the, what they call the MRFs, which are the recycling, the haulers actually run those MRFs. There's some technological advances there that will make it much, much easier to pull more out of the waste stream than we've even been able to pull now, but we do, they do an excellent job in doing that right now. So hopefully that answers your question.
That did, thank you. And just for full disclosure, I am a graduate of the Marion County Master Recycler Program, so I'm very familiar with their services.
Congratulations. That's good. Councilor McCoy.
Commissioner, thanks for being here. This is helpful. I have one question, just general. So we've got the tipping fees for the, our facility. How do they compare to tipping fees in, you know, typical?
Well, now, I am not the expert on statewide, and those are some of the questions that I can bring back, and Estelle can probably talk about that more than I can, but Marion County is the only county in the state of Oregon that has a waste-to-energy facility. And actually, there are waste-to-energy facilities here and there, more on the east coast than there are on the west side of the nation, and a lot more in Europe where they have limited land, and they're looking to try to deal with, with energy. So, it's a kind of an apples and oranges comparison to compare tipping fees in a landfill to tipping fees at a waste-to-energy facility, because the two systems are really so very different. If you're trying to look at whether our tipping fees are of value or the same value as another waste-to-energy facility. Would it cost you less to send it to a landfill? If cost were the only issue, probably yes, but there are a whole lot of other things that go into our solid waste system, like the energy that we create, like pulling out the recyclables that we pull to the extent that we do, like pulling out the metal, like the fact that we have used the same plot of ground that you see when you're almost, you're past Woodburn Outlet Mall and almost to the waste station heading up to Wilsonville, and you see those big clumps with grass. That's like 30 years' worth of garbage from all of Marion County sitting in those ash piles. So there's, and I don't want to be a commissioner when we have another land use hearing and decide where we're going to site a landfill in Marion County. So then there's transportation costs to go to Boardman, or there's capacity issues at McMinnville, so it's, it's a very complex set of variables that you have to look at.
By the way, commuted to Wilsonville for 16 years and watched those hills go up over the years.
Right, and we're not putting any more into that now, because we're actually using it down at Coffin View for daily ground cover of the ash, so really, it's a net zero worth of ash currently, but that's a contract where we pay them to take our ash, and that may not be forever, too. We can't assume that it will be forever.
So, Commissioner, I just want to check. Our last landfill was out at, out on the island, out on Bronze Island, is that?
I believe so, and, I mean, Sam Brantano is the best historian on this, and he talks about how, when he started, we were literally just putting our garbage into the river.
Yeah.
And, you know, it was like right up against the river, and when things flooded, it just washed out there, and we know that the Willamette River, that it's cleaner than it has been for many, many years, but part of that is us taking the waste and doing something different with it.
And one other, it's been mentioned several times, the integrated service, what, what is that? Can you describe what's inside integrated service, or how you take that apart?
So, integrated service would be, and this is my parlance, and I don't know if you want to add to this. I keep looking at, they're, they're looking at me like, does she know what she's...
If you get it wrong, I bet they're up there.
Am I doing okay? All right. So we have the waste-to-energy facility, that's part of the integrated system. We pull out the metals, the ferris metals. We also have now non-ferris metal machines that can pull that out, and we sell the metal on the diminishing recycling market. We have people recycle as much as possible. We have all of those various things that Ryan talked about, you know, latex paint and batteries and things that you can pick up curbside, that that's not a service that's offered even everywhere in Marion County, because it becomes cost prohibitive for someone to drive out a country road, you know, in the middle of nowhere and pick up somebody's batteries, but we have that. Here in Salem, we have our composting facility and the green barrel that, I remember when I was running, I think when I was running for county commissioner, the green barrels were coming out, or maybe that was in between. People always complain when they get like another barrel, but that one, carton, sorry. I call it the barrel. But, but that, that allows us to be able to take a lot of, you know, the yard waste, and also now, you know, pizza boxes and meat and other organics, and take them out of the waste stream. So, and then the transfer station, you know, you've been out there, right, and it includes the technology where we take, you know, old computers and all the other things that they take out there, so.
Okay, great, thank you. Councilor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for coming down, Commissioner Carlson. I not only have driven by the Woodburn Plant, I have been out there and seen it in operation a number of times, and it's very efficient and effective, and you've got good employees out there. My question is, did Ms. Harland describe the rate setting, the tipping rate-setting process? That's the right description of what happens?
Well, I think the, the part that she doesn't see, and that, that comes before the public hearing, is obviously the work sessions that we have with the staff. The staff comes to us and says, "We're looking at budget projections, and we've got a cliff coming up here, and we're not going to be able to pay. We're going to have to take substantial reductions, more than the reductions we've taken." And as elected officials, we're, we are not excited about going to the public and asking them to pay increased fees, so...
We understand that.
Right, exactly. And so, we're like, have you looked under every rock? Have you considered this? Have you considered that? You know, can we look into the budget? Can we go more on the expenditure side? The original proposal that was brought to us was higher than the one that we ended up adopting, and it would have been in two phases. Can't remember, it was like $5, and then we were going to do a small increase, and then another $5, like three years later. And we were like, ooh, don't want to do like a gigantic raise, and then another gigantic raise in a few years. So, we were able to figure out how to consolidate that into a lower one, and everybody felt the pain last year, and we're not intending to raise those tipping fees at that level again. I do think, I mean, this is a personal statement, I'm not speaking for my board now, but I do favor the idea of doing incremental increases more quickly than waiting, you know, from 1992 to last year, and then having this huge increase that people really felt significantly. So I think we need to be talking about that.
Okay. Great, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, anyone else? Okay, questions for staff? I'm going to, I'm going to ask, ask the first, I want to follow up on what the Commissioner mentioned on incremental as opposed to sort of sudden. Having been, having watched water in this town where generations went without water rate increases, and suddenly, my generation and generations after me have had to start paying the piper on that, what happens when you don't do these incremental rate increases? What will happen in two years or four years in terms of rates, if it were set at zero or a much lower percentage? How does that play out? Either you or the manager.
If I can speak to some history regarding our water and sewer rates, I believe it was in 2008, and Peter can correct me if I'm wrong, where there was no increase approved. One was recommended, I believe, at 3%, and there were two increases that were recommended, each of 3%. Zero was adopted by council, and what resulted in the following years were 6% increases in each of the subsequent years. So it's, it's a matter of making up what was lost during that period of time, much as the Commissioner spoke to about the tipping fees in Marion County. So, the small incremental gives some, both stability and some foresight to individuals to know what's coming, and prevents some of those large peaks that, that you experience when you don't take care of it incrementally.
Thank you.
I don't think I have anything to add to that. I think DC covered that. That's, that's part of the reason why we're looking at doing the two rates, two years, and doing small incremental increases, just to maintain the increases in, in the inflation, rather than, like you said, waiting and then doing a large catch-up. I think the pain would be, would be greater.
Well, did I understand Ms. Harland correctly, then, that there is a potential for corrective action in the second year of corrective? Did I, I wasn't sure I understood that completely.
So one of, as we, as staff approached the haulers with the idea of doing the biannual rates, one caveat to that was that if there were unexpected significant increases, if there were unforeseen reasons, for instance, a huge change in the recycling market again, or as, as I think Councilor Nicky mentioned, you know, a significant change in fuel that really necessitated a, a change in the rate other than what was adopted, that we would review and then possibly come back to council and say, "This is what we adopted, but because of these unforeseen circumstances, we feel that these are necessary adjustments to what was previously adopted."
Does it go the other way as well?
No.
I think that's, that's a very, I think that's a very fair question. If, I don't, I don't think we've ever been in that position.
Ah, okay.
But I, I think it is a fair question, that if, if it looked as if all rates in all, all areas, or shall I say, lines of business, were moving to a place where they were outside of that and above that 8% to 12% range, and above 12%, certainly keeping it flat, but if, if it looked like we needed to, and, and working with the haulers and seeing what it would take to actually maybe bring those back down.
Okay. Councilor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Judy asked a question during her testimony. Interestingly, it's one that I had asked you over the weekend about commercial rates. And I was hoping that you could maybe explain to, to the other councilors and to the, to the residents here, what you explained to me via email over the weekend about commercial rates.
I would be happy to, thank you. So, as, as we mentioned earlier, even if, well... Hey, Ruth, would you mind turning it on? So as an example, if we look at Polk County, actually, let's see, let's go back up one more. So if we look at Polk County at 10.1% for 2018, that is almost right on the dot with, with what the target that we'd have for, for that whole zone of the 10.1%. However, within that, there are multiple lines of business. We have residential carts, we have commercial containers, and we also have the drop box. Some other lines of business, but those are the three primary lines of business. So, if you break that down even further, you'll notice, you find that, that individual lines of business are not all at 10.1. Some are going to be a little bit higher, some are lower. And due to that, as was mentioned earlier, that mix where some haulers have more residential customers, and other haulers have more commercial customers, that profit between the haulers can then vary. So in order to help maintain that parity, both between the rates and the lines of business, so that the commercial businesses aren't supplementing residential and vice versa, we always seek to balance not only the zones of Marion County and Polk County, but also the lines of business within those zones, your residential and commercial, so that those are also targeting at 10%. We don't have subsidization between them.
So, if I could follow up, if it, it might appear that because there's a residential increase, but not a commercial increase this time, that residential is somehow subsidizing commercial, but that, that's actually not the case? Is that true?
That is correct. So the reason why commercial is not, why there's, we're not seeking an increase for commercial is that commercial is, is already at or above that 10%, where the residential is, is below that range or towards the bottom of that range, and so we're seeking to move residential up to that same level. Thank you.
Other questions?
Councilor Anderson.
Thank you. First of all, Mr. Zinke, thank you for all this work. It's, it's, was helpful to us, I think, when we looked at it. But my first question is, what are drop boxes?
So if you have a remodeling project...
Okay, got it. That's, so, I understand that.
Okay.
So, so drop boxes are, are only connected with residential places when there's a big project doing, and they drop off a dumpster, and then they come and pick it up later?
It could be commercial or residential, but whoever, yeah, it's, it's basically a temporary box.
All right.
Yes.
Then, I happen to print out and read Salem Revised Code 47.099-F. And I noted all the factors, and factor number 10 is, "Any other factor deemed relevant by the city council?" Do you have any idea what that means, or in the past, has the city council determined there are other factors relevant other than 1 through 9?
I am not aware of any other factors that have been deemed relevant by the council.
Okay. Then, I look at the, the rate charge, your graph where you have rate comparison, residential monthly rate on the 35-gallon?
Yes.
So, I understand that most of these cities are not in Marion County, which is really, I think, what we're talking about, but I look at Kaiser. Kaiser is right next to us. Yes, it's a smaller city, but they're paying the same tipping fees.
Yes.
And, you know, they're, I don't know, if their residential, industrial, commercial mix is about the same as ours, but I would guess it's somewhat similar.
Right.
So why are they paying $4.13 less per month than we are?
Well, Councilor Anderson, I have the same question.
Well, good.
So I asked...
So you already answered it, too.
I already asked that question.
Okay.
And so I hope to cover all the points, and if I don't, I might ask some of our, my helpers over here to, to fill in the gaps. A couple of things that I recall, one, first of all, they're closer, so you have a shorter distance between Kaiser and the Covanta.
Okay, and the burners out there in Brooks.
Right, and so it's, there's shorter distance, there's going to be less fuel, less distance. Another thing that I, as I understand, I haven't verified this myself by looking at a map, but there's, my understanding is there's more, the streets are laid out in a different manner that allow for more efficient pickup. So that goes back to the, the routing that was mentioned before.
Perhaps because it's a flat area, not a hilly area?
Okay, perhaps. And I apologize, it seems like there was a third one, but I'm not recalling off the top of my head. Did I miss anything, or did that...
Those are essential.
So...
Right.
What, what was that? I can't hear.
There's not a third one.
There's not a third?
Not a third one, apparently.
It's not, it's not, because it's just...
It's the street layout and the closeness. Those are the two.
No sidewalks in the way, or...
Yeah, yeah.
The third one would be the, the franchise fee, and Salem is 7%. I believe it's, is it 5 in...
Oh, yes, so Kaiser is at a 5% franchise fee, whereas Salem is at a 7%.
Well, let's ask about that franchise fee.
Okay.
I know we went up from 5 to 7.
Yes.
And I know that extra 2, Councilor Cook will be happy to hear, is, goes to sidewalks. The increase.
Streets.
Streets, streets, okay.
Yes.
Sorry. But isn't that franchise fee that they pay us, then taken out by, as the cost of their doing business?
Yes, it is.
So, so it's a kind of a wash. I mean, if they pay a 7%, they're saying our pre-tax profits include backing out that 7% as the cost of doing business that we paid to the city.
That is one of the, yeah, so it is an expense that they, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yes, that, that's, that additional went into the rates.
Okay, then, I'm looking at the, the slide backwards on that residential rate history.
Yes.
And I understand, I'm looking at the, the big jump in the black line in October of 16, and I understand why, that's because of the tipping fee increase that we talked about and Commissioner Carlson talked about, but if you look at the general relations of the lines, the red line, Polk County, and the dark line being Marion County, they seem to run about the same, but if you look at the dotted lines going up, Marion County is going up higher than Polk County. So what's the explanation for that increase, you know, on the last two dotted line areas?
So one thing to keep in mind is this is specific to that 35-gallon roll cart service. And if you recall, for Polk County, there was no increase for, let me just verify this... Go back up here. For Polk County, for 2018, there was no overall increase, that remained flat. However, the 35 gallon went up that 25 cents. And then, so over, overall, there was zero increase for the residential. Can go back and look at the, all the analysis, but there's, yeah.
Just two more areas of questions, if I might, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sure.
What we're talking about here is pre-tax profits.
Yes.
So we don't know what happens after tax. I mean, the analogy I might draw is to, you know, we say that the United States corporate tax rate is 35 percent, but when you actually look at it, it's only at about 15 percent that the corporations are paying, because there's lots of deductions and other write-offs they can take before they pay their taxes. So we don't know whether that's 7 percent after their CPAs look at it and, and.
Sure.
It might be a higher level of profit.
Sure. We don't, through our analysis and our review, we don't look at.
Because that's proprietary information for, for these folks.
Right.
Then, what happens if we say no? I mean, in, in my business, you know, if we're negotiating something and one side says no, the other side doesn't just walk away. Sometimes they come back and say, well, can we meet someplace else? So what happens if this vote were to say, no, we don't authorize the increase? Is that just it for a year, or will you and the, I'm sorry, I forget the name, the Waste Haulers Association?
Right.
Look at this in another way, and maybe come back to something with this?
I think there are a couple of options. One is, you know, we don't do anything, we come back in a year and try, and try again. Another option is to look at some of the concerns, if there are areas that council feel can be addressed within the, the analysis and the current rates that have not been addressed properly or sufficiently, we can address those issues and come back in a couple of months, or, you know, at a, at a later date to try to address those and, and take another run at it. But.
And if, if I may, I don't mean to speak for the other party in this negotiation that you're talking about, but there, there could be some balances to, if, looking at both sides of the equation, if our revenues aren't increasing, perhaps there are fewer services that can be required of us in order to lower our overall expenses and bring us to that equilibrium that we're trying to achieve.
Counselor Cook.
Ryan, it looks like you talked with all of us separately. I'm sorry for any double.
Area.
It looks like you, is it not working? Can you hear me now? All right, I'll project. I wanted to thank you for talking with me last week about the garbage increases as well. And I was wondering if you could talk a bit about the contamination that we talked about previously. As Casey had just mentioned, looking at services to draw for ways that we can be more efficient as customers to help keep costs down. We had talked about the mixed organics recycling, the regular recycling and the garbage, and you had some really interesting things to, I found very interesting, looking at how the fees are set and ways that I can help keep things low as a residential customer.
So my understanding, in terms of the, the larger picture here, is that the more we recycle, even with the recycling market dropping and they're becoming less valuable, the more we recycle and the cleaner that, and fewer contaminants that those recycled materials have, the more valuable the recycling material is and the lower cost to the overall system. So if I say anything that's not true, I'm going to look to the, the experts over here to, to correct me. And so as, the more that we can recycle, the more that we can fill up our big blue cart, maybe going from a 35 to a 20 gallon, a cart for, for residents, that will lower the overall cost as less of the solid waste is disposed of. Did that answer your question, or are there some other topics? We, we talked about a number of things, so if there's something else specifically, I'd be happy to.
So it's not just filling the big blue bin and not just filling the mixed organics recycling cart, but also, you had mentioned the contamination.
Right.
So how much of that is not usable, because people are putting things into those bins that then make it so that the recycling cannot be reused, or isn't able to be resold?
I don't know specifics, so I can, personally, I can speak in generalities, that the cleaner it is, the less work it is to separate, and then the more valuable the recycled material is. If, for some specifics in terms of the amounts of contamination and that, that we see in Marion County or Polk County with recycling, I'd have to defer to our, to our experts, if they have any of that information.
If I can, some neighbors of mine, they, they look in them on occasion, and they will refuse to take your recycled container if it is full of contaminated, non-recyclable material.
Is this a big issue? Please.
Glad to help out, Dave Lear, thank you. So it's great that you're bringing this up. Ironically, I just was at the county before coming down here today, working, you know, I, there's a lot going on with recyclable markets, you know, those of you who've read Wall Street Journal, just came out yesterday, China's basically shut America off. And the reason they've shut us off on our recycling commodities is because of how dirty our product is. And so ironically, there's a lot of discussion going on in the state right now with DEQ, a lot of the counties and ourselves, and Marion County are really happy today that we want to try to say unified, really keep this a strong message. So we're working together to create a message that talks about education, pulling out the Recycling 101s about how do we deliver a good, clean product? Because right now, what's happened is because we've been, like, they've been in our enforcement, per se, there is no enforcement, it's whatever's in the tub, the roller cart, and we've gotten to where diapers are recyclable now, and small engines are recyclable now. So it's going to go, we're going to go back to, it's a real nice campaign about what is good, clean recycling? And it's, you know, it is, you know, taking a little bit more time to prep things, understanding that not everything that has a triangle on it is recyclable. And so you're going to see some communication come out, I'm speaking a little bit here for the county, but we did have, just had a good meeting, we left there unifying, saying, you know what, we're not going to wait for the consumers, you know, except you brought it up tonight, thank you. But you will be seeing some from a Marion County perspective about how do we just go back to Education 101? Because it's important. We've taken recycling for granted, and unfortunately, without having end markets or manufacturing in our own country to process this material, we've relied on outsourcing, and we need to find a way to clean it up so we have a marketable commodity, so we can keep solid waste, you know, curb side prices down.
Good.
Just, you brought up the recycle. I think a lot of people think, as long as it has the symbol, it has to go somewhere, it goes into that void. And Ryan, in our conversation, you pointed out, when you go to a, a business, a commercial business, and they have the three bins, one for trash, one for compost, and one for recycling, and then you look in the bins and you can't tell the difference, that that's a problem. Being someone who's had to sort through those bins before on shifts, I completely understood because it's someone's time and someone's energy to be able to go through. So I'm looking forward to this campaign.
Okay. Counselor McCoy.
Ryan, we had the, the folks that, low-income folks that are looking for the discount. You mentioned if they were, if qualifying for the discount, if they were on a water program, then they're automatically placed on this program? Or do they still have to apply to be placed on the program?
They're not automatically placed on the program, but so, but they will automatically qualify. So in other words, if they have gone to the city's utility department and they qualify through that program, they can take proof from that program that they qualify, take it to any of their haulers, and they'll get the same, get a, get the 10 percent discount.
So they have to call into the city to request that they be considered and/or apply for this discount? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, go. Counselor Tiggo there. What? The, the guest counselor would like to ask.
No.
Well, I just want to clarify the one point, if I may, I'm sorry, I apologize. Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. The city does not qualify people that are in that program. We use third parties, we use agencies to qualify them, so, so I just want to be absolutely clear that when, when, when people are qualified as either a disabled head of household, or the other, I forget what the other program is, then, and senior disabled, then we qualify them. But then they're in our system, and, and certainly they could then use that, but I just want to be clear that, you know, the city is not asking for that proof. We use a third-party agency.
Someone who knows what they're doing.
Somebody who knows what they're doing. And we're not, we're not interested in diving into people's business.
Exactly. Okay.
Well, I'm going to change the subject, so.
You change, okay. Counselor McCoy.
Well, so those are the only two categories of folks that can qualify for the discount?
That's correct. It's only for sewer.
For sewer?
Right.
Is that applied to garbage too?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
But someone who lives in multifamily and isn't a homeowner would not see a discount at any time.
That is correct. You have to be a, you don't have to be a homeowner, but you have to be a customer, and a multifamily renter is not a customer of the city of Salem. They are, the, the owner of the apartment complex is the customer.
Even if every resident in a multifamily unit was elderly, disabled, head of household, they would not get?
They would not get that. It's for single-family residential only.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe my question will come together now with that example. I come from, originally from St. Paul, Minnesota, which I think is sort of famous for its unregulated trash hauling market. We had, I think, 12 or 13 servicers in our area, and I'm curious, it says here in the, in the report that the city regulates rates to simulate competition. So what about this rate setting stimulates competition among the haulers? Do you have good examples of what's competitive between the franchisees?
So I guess the, the way I would describe that is that in, being that this is, in a sense, in a sense, a monopoly, that the city has monopoly on, on garbage hauling, and we have franchised out to six haulers within the city of Salem to provide that service. So by benchmarking to a particular return on revenue, we regulate that so that there isn't a gouging of prices just because a hauler has a franchise in a particular area. So the haulers don't cross over into different zones. So for instance, where I'm at is DNO. The DNO is the only hauler that I can receive a service from at my house. I can't go to Republic, I can't go to Valley, I can't go to Suburban, I can't go to, to the others. And so by the city going through this process and targeting a, a specific return on revenue, we are keeping those prices from going up as you might see in a monopolistic area.
But if one franchisee can be more efficient than the competitors around them, they can at least make more than the benchmark if they're particularly good at it? Or is everything so constrained that there's?
If they become particularly good at it, then yes, they can. But, so that's, that's one reason why we look at the consolidated financials. We're not looking at each individually, we're looking at them consolidated, in a consolidated manner.
Does the city have an, and maybe this is getting back to one of the questions we heard at public testimony, does the city have an idea of how many citizens aren't a customer of the city and are being charged, apparently, a raising rate from their landlord, rather than, so they're, they're getting trash service from their landlord rather than from the city?
I'm not quite sure how to answer that question. So if I, if I, we're just restating it, are you asking how many people are in a multifamily unit that they don't pay trash directly, but rather their landlord pays for the trash service?
Right. The city goes through this, the, the rate setting, but then there's some folks who are not participating in the rate setting, because they're essentially acting as the city acts by setting their rate for trash hauling away from the multifamily unit.
I see your question.
Sorry, I didn't mean to put you in a tough spot. I just wondered if, you know, we knew how many folks are in that situation.
We don't have that information. What we do know is the number of accounts in the city, similar to with our water and sewer. It's roughly 50,000, I believe, and server population approximately 160,000. Other than that, we don't know how many individuals are tied to a specific account.
Okay. Okay. Counselor Hoy.
Good question. Back in the beginning of your presentation, you mentioned that one of the criteria you used is, is whether the rates are just. And I keep coming back to this equity issue between east side of the bridge and west side of the bridge, and I'm wondering, did you factor that in? And what does that, what, how do you evaluate just rates?
So the, the primary measure that we use is that return on revenue, and then down to the level of the different lines of service. With that target, and, it's a good question.
So, because when you talk about looking at the return on revenue, that's looking at it from one perspective, but when I think of just rates, I'm thinking of it from my perspective, which is the rate payer, the person who, who has the garbage service, which, from Suburban, by the way, and they do, and they do excellent service, I just have to say that. But I'm looking at it from my perspective, and I want to make sure that the rates are just from the consumer perspective. And I appreciate that we also have to look from the business perspective, because I think that's important too. But I'm just curious, what do we do, how are we doing that?
So I might comment that just is, in my mind in particular, being able to justify the rates for being charged, and that's done in looking at the expenses tied to each individual business line, and ensuring that, that they're allocated with some equity and fairness and appropriately, and that the rates being charged in particular category or line aren't in excess of the actual cost, that there's justification behind what those rates are.
One thing I would add to that is that the variety of services that the haulers provide, so that there isn't just one, there's, for those that do produce a small amount of trash, they have options. For those that produce a large amount of trash, they have options. And so there's, I think that helps provide some of that fairness and justness, if you will.
Okay.
I have just one more comment.
All right.
I, I promise it'll be brief.
Comments are for debate, often, but go ahead, ask your question.
I can, I can form it into a question. What is the city and/or the garbage haulers doing to really advertise this on-call service? Because I think that that is a real option for people to save some money who are low producers of waste. But honestly, I had never heard of that until I read the council packet. And so I'm just curious, what we're doing to get that, the word out, so people, there is an opportunity for people who live in single-family dwellings to lower their rates by using the on-call service. I'm just wondering what we're doing there.
So I don't know what is being done to advertise that, but I will provide some perspective with that program, is that that program is on a, such a cost per call. So every time they call, there's a charge for that. And so I did a, a analysis to see how many times can they call, do that on-call, before it becomes less expensive or more effective to just be on a regular service? So for a given year, 12 months, they call eight times. Now, keep in mind that that is just garbage service. It's not recycling, it's not mixed organics, it's just garbage service, it's a 35 gallon cart. If they, there's also a mixed recycle service that can be purchased as well, that is, it's every other week, mixed recycling. So I put those together, assuming someone, assuming someone did not want the, the mixed organics, because if you add that in separately, it suddenly is, is very clear to just be on a regular weekly service. But with the mixed recycling service and then the on-call, if you call more than eight times a year, it's more cost-effective to be on just a standard 20-gallon cart service, where do you get weekly pickup, you have every other week garbage service, or recycling service, and weekly mixed organics.
Sorry.
Yeah. Did you have a question for it?
Well, it might be more.
Yeah, really, if it's a question, I think it's in, in order. I think at some point, we're going to start to debate this, and that's where comments come in.
Okay, it's a question.
Okay.
All right.
Haulers, I think, would I be able to get someone? We talked about traffic around school zones, and I was looking, you were talking about the weekly or biweekly pickup. Do the trash trucks and recycling trucks, are they sent out at different hours? Is that part of the flow control, the time of day that they're sent out? And for the haulers? No, if people just pick what times for their routes, or how is that determined? Flow control?
You're going to have to come up and explain.
Flow control refers strictly to where garbage has to be disposed of, and that's strictly on the disposal side. The haulers work out, as we've talked about efficiency, they work out their routing. And so when the trucks go out is an individual company decision. It has nothing to do with flow control. But they do it for, very much for efficiency and for keeping constancy between customers and, you know, and a system that's consistent and regular and easy to understand.
Okay, that's great. Counselor McCoy, do you have a motion?
Close the air.
Y'all ready? Okay, public hearing's closed. Okay, Counselor.
I move the staff recommendation.
Second. Second by Osik.
Well, to the motion, I think this is, Ryan and the staff have done a great job of analyzing this. You go through it, it seems like it's eminently fair. You know, on one hand, I had a discussion with somebody yesterday, while I was at the chef's night out, and he's bending my ear, and I said, you know, well, he's calling it a monopoly. I said, well, that may be true, but it's not truly that, because they don't get to set their prices. Their prices are set for them. The profits are set for them. And that makes a big difference if you're a business. I mean, it's one thing if you're a monopoly and you're just gouging people, it's another one when you get told what your profit's going to be. And as a matter of fact, you can be more efficient, maybe boosted up, but all things being equal, you know, it's different than the norm. I look at this, it's, I don't think, you know, the increases are not draconian, they're not any 16 percent like we dealt with the last time we really looked at this, because of the increase in the tipping fees. They're needed to keep these folks in the eight to 12, 10, eight to 12 percent, really it's about a 10 percent profit margin in the next two years, and so I will support this proposal.
Counselor Hoyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't want to vote yes for this, but I'm going to. At this point, I don't feel like that we have a, given the state law about flow control and all of the other pieces of information we've heard tonight, I'm not sure that we have a choice but to support this. But what I would like to see is that we engage in a robust conversation with the county to really look at the burner and the costs of the burner, and really understand what the costs of those tipping, what goes into the costs of those tipping rates?
Yeah.
And to really get our hands around that. And I think that, you know, there's, I'd like to see our rates flatten out across the both sides of the river. And so I guess my, the only other point I'd like to make is, I do think we ought to at least consider the information that we got from our, at least two of our neighborhood associations asking us for a delay. You know, we rely on our neighborhood associations to give us information. They say they haven't had an opportunity to provide adequate information, so I would like to at least to consider putting this off until they have that opportunity.
Okay. Anyone else? Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just in regards to incremental increases, I mean, the mayor spoke about it at the beginning in regards to water sewer services of the past. We've actually been doing that at airport lease rates, downtown parking, and so that, because by the time we get around to actually relating that our pricing is way out of line, then people see this gargantuan increase. Not that I want to see a little increase every year and look at that over the term, but it at least allows people to budget more effectively. I've dealt with the waste haulers for decades here in both residential and commercial, and they do a splendid job, just to touch on Counselor Cook's, 12th Street. They do not want to have trucks out there when you have packed traffic, or they don't want to be near a school in the morning, neither do I. So they factor that in to give themselves the highest level of efficiency for those pickups as well. So they're constantly looking at that.
Counselor Anderson.
Normally, I don't have much of a problem of reaching a decision on various issues in front of the council, but I will tell you that this one has caused me some consternation and this inner discussion. I'm certainly sensitive to the incremental versus the big jump issue, and I can see what happened when we had the 16 percent big jump issue. I'm also sensitive and aware of the balance between the businesses needing to make an appropriate profit, and I agree with everyone else who has said, you folks do a terrific Then there's the balance of individual people who might look at this and sort of be suffering. And then I also guess I, there's two ends to this telescope. And one end is the bigger end of the company's desire and appropriate need to make the appropriate profit, the carriers and the cities need to work with the carriers and establish good rates. And on the other end of the telescope is the effect on the individual, who has already had a 16 percent raise 15 months ago, and now if you look at this, it'd be a raise up to 21 percent over two years. And in my personal business, I do a lot of negotiation, and there's, and I represent the entities that have the money. And we may come down to just a little bit of money that the other side is not moving off it. And what I often say to them is, that small amount of money means a whole lot more to them than it does to you who have the big money. And, you know, we also negotiate all the time, which is why I raise the question of what happens if we said no. And I appreciate of what Counselor Hoyer says, that we need a robust discussion with the county, as we're their biggest customer. And then finally, I look at this and I say, there are six companies here, and I'm sure internally, some companies are very efficient and are making a higher rate than the rate we're looking at, and some companies aren't so inefficient, aren't so efficient, and are making a lower rate. But when you look at it, we're talking really, at least in Marion County, as near as I can figure out from discussions with Deputy City Manager Casey Duncan, that it's, we're looking at maybe a 1.4 percent difference between what happens if we do nothing and what happens if we increase the rates in terms of what they'll end up being. So I'm going to vote no on this, in the hopes that we can have that robust discussion now, as opposed to some point later.
Anyone else? Counselor Nanki.
Thank you. And just one piece, and Counselor Anderson's comments reminded me of that. If the burner is maxed at 100 percent, we definitely need to be having robust discussions, because it affects a lot of things. And where material's going to be moving, the costs associated with that down the line, actually from a commercial business perspective as well, in regards to diversion ratios. Because I had, did a ton to get everything non-combustible out of my drop box, so that I could actually get it to the burner and take that 90 percent extra discount, as far as non landfill material. So if we're going to have to start maneuvering people's boxes, depending on where their businesses are, it can affect how that they're viewed in their environmental performance as well. So there's large-scale impacts across the board on 100 percent max out and expansion or no expansion, and what happens to everybody's garbage.
Yes.
So I just want to support my Counselor Hoyer, my neighbor here. I'm in agreement with him, that I don't really want to vote for this in the way that it's always been explained in the past, well, we can't increase the rates, so we have to increase the rates, doing the small improvement makes sense. But after talking with Ryan about this whole process, I really started to see how important waste management is to the city. And it really opened my eyes that it's important that, instead of having this conversation about rates, we need to increase it to a larger discussion about, as you were saying, Counselor Nanki, what are we doing with a city this size to make sure that our waste isn't forever increasing, but we're being efficient with it and moving it to the right channels and decreasing in the long run.
Anyone else?
Can I add one last piece?
Sure.
I just want to thank the testimony on the upfront in regards to the, looking at it every other week for 20-gallon roll carts as well, because I don't fill mine up as it is, and so I will be utilizing that as well.
Yeah. I'm going to, just, just a couple of thoughts. One of the, one of the major long-term environmental issues we all face is solid waste. There's just no question about it. I think to walk away from our responsibility to deal with solid waste, whether it's to say, I don't want to raise rates, or I want to raise rates, or whatever, I think would be a real mistake. It's the kind of thing that runs counter to the strategic planning we've been working on. I think the thing that disturbs me most is the suggestion, I don't know if it's real, but it made me very concerned, that the potential outcome of not meeting these minimal rate requests is a diminution of our current service, that we would lose elements of what is an outstanding, a nationally recognized outstanding service. That would be very sad. And if that were the outcome of our delay, or of our failure to act, I think we would be really doing the citizens a disservice. I heard a bunch of issues raised, that I thought were a real concern. I thought Joyce's comments about what happens in large apartment complexes certainly are the kinds of things that probably a lot of us left apartment complexes because of those kinds of controls on our lives. And I understand that, and I think it's something worth taking a look at at some future date. But I'm not sure this is the time to try to solve that debate. I just don't think we can do it. The difference between Marion and Polk County is in fact the difference between a modern garbage waste system and one that relies on landfills. And I challenge anyone, I heard the commissioner say it, she's absolutely correct, who wants, who here wants to site a landfill? I mean, I remember when, I, there's some things about Brown's Island I recall from years ago, where people would be moving across it and stuff would kind of blow up under their tractor, kind of, or whatever their caterpillar, whatever they were moving, there was so much stuff buried in those things. You don't want to be citing those out on prime farmland, or in the South Hills, or just east of Lancaster, or anywhere else. And that's, you see what I mean? So I think we, we're faced with a difficult choice, but I think the choice is reasonably clear, that we need to move ahead. And then I certainly agree, we should spend some real quality time on the issues, particularly with the county. I think that that's a long-term, longer term, not long-term, a longer-term project. So I would encourage you to, let's move forward on this, and then let's take it up, perhaps even put it into our strategic plan as a specific item, and figure out how we'd like to address it. We have an opportunity still to bring this to us in a more comprehensive way, as part of a broader discussion of our environmental responsibilities. Yes, Counselor?
Thank you. Those are all eloquent points. It hasn't changed my vote, but, but I will tell you that...
I didn't think I would, but I thought I'd take a shot at you.
Yeah. But I will tell you that, that as part of our new environmental action plan, we did talk about how the city is dealing with, and how we're going to continue to deal with solid waste and as well as other things.
I hope we mean it.
Yeah.
I hope we mean it.
Yeah, we need to follow up on that, no matter what the end of the vote here, and I agree with that completely.
Yeah, I do worry that it's easy to do kind of virtue signaling on some of these issues and not take the hard votes, okay? So, all those ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. And we're on to information reports. Nobody pulled? Anyone have anything on information reports?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Cook.
On item 6D, I would, I would like to move for a public hearing.
Second?
Second.
Second by Hoyer. This is a land use decision that the counselor would like to have a public hearing on. Fairly standard motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Who's the no? Louis. Okay, motion passes.
I just had a point. So for members of council, 6C and 6D are both, will be coming to you on appeal for hearings, and those are both quasi-judicial land use decisions, so please avoid ex parte contacts with the public on those.
And we're on to second reading of ordinances.
Ordinance Bill 20-17, an ordinance vacating the southeasterly portion of Old McClay Road Counselor Lewis? Counselor Kazer absent. Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor McCoyd?
Aye.
Counselor Osik?
Aye.
Counselor Hoyer?
Aye.
Counselor Cook?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. I don't see any further business. Thank you, Mr. Tigan, for your evening with us.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and fellow councilors.
Oh, darn. I'm sorry, you guys. Sorry, Hazel. You're up. I apologize. Gosh, I was in such a hurry. Hazel, you're up.
She's got that, that, we're grabbing some footprints. Just make it full screen.
I didn't know this listing, I'm sorry. Sorry, Hazel, I got ahead of myself, I didn't see this list.
You wanted to go home, didn't you?
No, no.
I'm Hazel Patton, 1363 Court, and I'm very happy to be here. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I didn't know where they'd make it, but I am, it was a long evening. But I'm here talking about the Salem Main Street Association, I'm president of the board. And we did appear before you at one time about five or six months ago, and just talked about the Main Street program as a whole. And you invited us back, and so when we get invited, we come back. And we're very pleased to talk to you now about one of the committees. There's four committees in this association, so the one we're going to talk about tonight is the Design Committee meeting, Committees. And the Design Committee is focused on all the businesses from the front of the store out to the street. And so that gives us an opportunity to do a lot of things that are very, very exciting. The Design Committee is governed by the board's goals. So the two goals that they set for us, that we are focusing on, one is to connect downtown with the Riverfront Park. There's a huge disconnect, and we can't do that physically, but we're going to try and do it visually. And our second goal is to revitalize our downtown alleys. So I'm going to talk about connection between the two entities, downtown and the Riverfront Park. Park. And I'm going to tell you a little story first, because this kind of signifies what our philosophy is. In July, I got to go to Iceland, Denmark, and the Netherlands with two of my sons and a granddaughter. And when we were in Copenhagen, we toured the palaces, and there are four palaces just in Copenhagen. And of course, when you're done touring, you get to go into the gift shop. And I found a T-shirt that I just loved, so I bought it, brought it home, and put it, started to put it on, and looked, you know how the tags are on our shirts, the ones that irritate the heck out of us? And it says, you know, "Made in the United States, 100% cotton, washed with light colors. You can dry, but do it gently, and, you know, you can even touch it up with an iron." My T-shirt says, "This T-shirt is okay. This T-shirt is okay." It makes me laugh every time I put it on. So what we want to do is just make people smile, make people laugh when they go downtown, make them feel like this is a fun place to be, a fun and enjoyable place so that not only are they shopping, but they're having a good time about it. So I'm going to show you what we're proposing to connect our two entities.
Hazel, I apologize. Time has flown upon you here.
Okay, well, I'm going to let Patricia then tell me.
Exactly, Patricia has three minutes.
Okay, now I'm going to be really fast, because I have my own three minutes. Hi, I'm Patricia Fox. I own 1859 Satter Company. We were the very first business to actually go into the alley in downtown Salem. So just to let you know, I'm going to first finish up, Hazel. So we're looking at footprints here. These spots along downtown, I chair the Design Committee as well, I sit on the Salem Main Street Association along with Hazel. These are the spots around downtown where we want to actually connect. And what are we going to put in these spots? Simple footprints. Something to connect kids and families, adults alike. Just something to say, "What the heck are these things, and where do they go?" Well, they go to the waterfront. Just a couple of simple ideas, something simple. Our budget, I think it was $200. Come on. We can do this, we can do it. It's simple, it's not going to get in the way of the streetscape, because by the time that gets done, these things, no big deal, we'll be ready to refresh the paint. We're just asking for your support. This is simple, we can get it done in a day. Okay, only if this doesn't take up part of my three minutes, right? Okay, because I got my other thing. Go ahead.
Oh, no, keep going.
Oh, keep going. So, okay, that is really quick, because I got another one. Hang on, that was Hazel's. All right, so, alleys. What makes Salem special? Well, it's our historical downtown, okay? Everybody notices it. So, we're in the historic alley. We are in the PGE Yeeter Building. It is fabulous. What's not fabulous is when people say, "Where are you located?" I say, "My business is located behind Liberty Street between Schmeckada and Court Street." Should I draw you a map? Imagine if I had an incident at my taproom and were your first and only alcohol producer since 1953. What's going to happen? How is emergency services going to find my building? Good luck. We don't have any address, we have no real presence, and we have a huge opportunity to make Salem cool. The assets of the alley, that is our asset. We forgot about the historical part only of our alleys, but we kept all of our buildings. We can brand it. This is the coolest thing ever. This is what Seattle does, this is what San Francisco does. What else can we do? Garbage enclosures. Yeah, they stink. And people rummage through, that's a public and health, safety issue. We have a real opportunity to close that off, prevent against vermin, rodents, and actually green them up. They can be aesthetically pleasing. Let's really take control. We just talked, we listened a long time about our solid waste issues. Help us out in the alleys. This is what it could look like, this is what it does look like. We can make it aesthetically pleasing, it's not going to take much. I put a fortune in my leasehold improvement in a building I don't own. Help me out. This is what my alley looks like, this is what it could look like. Let's really make it back to the unloading and loading zones. When everybody is rushing through and trying to beat the bridge traffic, guess what? They almost hit my staff and our pedestrians and our customers. Let's block it off, we can do that, you have our support. We're one of your main businesses that rely on loading and unloading, and we're behind this movement. We can have lockable gates, boughs with keys for people that actually need them, and we can make it aesthetically pleasing. And another thing, streetscapes, the alleys are not part of that. We can do an alleyscape on a pretty good budget, and none picks up the garbage. Who picks up the garbage? We do. So help us out with the garbage enclosures, because the streets are thirsty, don't come. Thank you for your time.
Patricia, I had a question on this. We've talked about this before. I think this is fantastic idea. It's something we've worked on it for years, and seeing it actually somebody draw it out, I think is really good. What about naming these alleys?
Oh my gosh, that was my mini first point. Thank you, thank you, Mayor Bennett.
You're welcome.
So we have done a lot of historical research. One of the coolest things about downtown Salem, and thank you so much for asking, is that we do have historical names for these alleys. So my building is in the PGE building, is on the front on Liberty Street, it says Electric Apartments. That's because we were known as the Electric Alley. How cool is that? And then you've got my favorite, which is behind Archive, that was no-no alley. Why? Because there's brothels up and down. Let's not hide it, let's showcase how cool that is. Pepperment Flats was the highest area, this is over by the new Starbucks, Slum 554. That's actually where they watched people get hung from the alleys, because they could, that was the highest point in downtown Salem. Yeah, but it's cool, it's history. This is awesome. And then we've got Spirited Alleys, because there are saloons up and down. We have historical names that we can back up, and what we're asking for is some support, some resources, and yep, a little bit of a budget for you guys to, let's get this thing off the ground, let's kick it off. Time is wasting.
Patricia, one other question I have for you is, can you talk to me, I've been really interested for a number of years in an entertainment zone that allows a little bit of a noise change. Can you, what's going on down there?
I would love to speak to that. So we are a production facility that also has an attached taproom, where we have an open space production area. We have six studio apartments that go above us, and actually, none of our neighbors above us actually complain, but we do have a favorite resident that loves to complain. And we have mitigated our noise. We only have a band one night a week. We've installed sound panels on our own. But what would be great is having a little bit of flexibility like the rest of downtown in the alleys to actually make it a vibrant, vibrant city. Something where we're not getting treated any different than anybody else that has sidewalks, because we don't have them, where you're increasing walkability of pedestrians, and actually making it a vibrant downtown. I don't know if you guys have been to Brazos in the last several years, but just seeing what Brazzy Idaho has done with their alleys, it's just absolutely amazing. And talk about economic revitalization. You're going to get more businesses like mine, but willing to put money in, into Salem, into Salem, or believing in Salem, making Salem even cooler than it was. We need that money. We need to get rid of that vacancy, and the alleys is where it's at.
Patricia, will you be bringing us a budget of some kind?
Yes, we did actually, I did put together a budget. The budget was going to be for some garbage enclosures, which we were going to double with some greenering on top to improve that, as well as part of the design, some signs, which I happen to know how much they are, because I'm not allowed to have one, so I had to purchase a sign on either side of Schmeckada and Court Street, which ironically no one really sees, but that's okay. So we've got signs for those. I know how much those are, because I paid for one of each sign. We're the only alley business to do so, by the way. But we wanted to make them a little bit more historical in nature. I think my total budget, Hazel won't have it on me. You got it, Jim? Thank you. Jim's our treasurer, Salem Main Street.
Alleyways, $3,300. Bears, $300.
$3,300.
$3,600, which was?
$3,600. And that was really just to, like, focus on one alley, let's get it really going. We've got two murals in ours, which is super cool, but we really promote all of downtown, because it's just a huge asset.
Okay, Councilor Anderson.
Let's pass the hat right now. No. I actually have a question for Hazel Patton, and I didn't want to stop Patricia, because she was on a roll, so.
Go back to her presentation?
Yes. I'd like to see the one with the numbers, the numbers of downtown about the areas that you, yeah, yeah, yeah. So one of the things you're talking about, Hazel, is getting from downtown to the riverfront and the problems that are, and the problems are mostly with Front Street. And I'm looking at Court and Front, which right now it's an at-grade pedestrian crossing, and you have to cross and get to the alley and then go to the other way. And I would guess that's a little bit, I don't know, off-putting or intimidating for people who want to cross there.
For State Street, we have the animal prints.
Yeah.
And they're not going to be just one right after the other, they're going to be kind of scattered around. But when we get to that point where you have to wait at Front Street, we're going to put something like frogs' footprints or rabbits or something to make you realize you have to leap over. Does that answer you?
Well, not completely. I'm wondering, what about if, instead of having an at-grade crossing, there was some sort of raised pedestrian crossing over there, so there wouldn't be any concerns about stoplights, about either stopping traffic or having people and families going across, but they could walk up and over?
It's the ADA.
Well, okay, assuming that we could get a lift.
Your ramp would be way in town.
Well, not a ramp, we could do a lift or something. If that would be feasible, would you say that would be an easier way to encourage people to get, to connect to the park?
Would be easier, it'd be very, very expensive.
Okay, thanks.
But we were just given with the visual idea.
Right, right, thank you.
So you know you'll have a chance to come back and talk more. These, a number of these issues.
Are we getting invited again?
Hazel, always. Will be on our next council agenda. We'll have some of these issues on our next council agenda. So we'll have a chance to really kind of look at them in advance. We'll look forward to your thoughts on them and coming back for another evening with us.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Be a little earlier in the evening, perhaps?
I'll tell you, the really good idea is often to come when something's on the agenda, because you get to talk first.
Okay.
And then you get this city attorney to give you the list earlier.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Okay. Jan Kaidots. Am I right? Kaidots, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, Council, good evening. I'm Jan Kaidot. I live at 3797 June Avenue Northeast. And this is on the ongoing vacant, open entry home at 2275 Coral Street Northeast. I do want to thank you for your time. I know you guys have a lot going on your plates and stuff, and to listen to our concerns. But we've had an ongoing, it's an ongoing health and safety issue. I mean, this house had a fire November 9th, 2016. There has been all kinds of homeless, you name it, it's been there. I do not know how many times we have called the police, they've been good, yes. Three times a day, but here a few weeks ago, it was five times in one day. At 7:30 that morning, seven people tried to break into that house. Seven. The first officer that, he came, the first call, and stuff, and the first thing he said, this is a code enforcement issue. He says, "The grass in the front's three, four feet tall, it's debris, there's garbage, everything in the back." I mean, we haven't had rats, there's rats. It's a health and safety issue now. And I mean, I'm afraid to go out in my own backyard. If my husband isn't there, I'm not out there, heck no. So, you know, I know everybody's got things to do, but it's just gotten to be too much. The seven people. I mean, I haven't been happy on this for months, because he did, the officer did ask me if I, we've talked to code enforcement, and I said, "Oh, yes, several months, yes we have." And something like, I know, everybody gets busy, I know. But something, something's got to get done. We're not sleeping, the stress. I mean, we're looking at this house constantly. I mean, there are so many homeless people, and there's a lot of drug deals going on, these people that camp in the streets, that sleep in their cars. Where are they all going to the bathroom at night, by the way, or during the day for that matter? All around our houses. All around our houses. And we're afraid to leave the house anymore. I don't want to live like this. This isn't living, I didn't wait to retire to go through this. No, I did not. I don't need a heart attack. But anyway, I thank you. I will say real quick, though, this afternoon, after I finish writing this, which I really didn't even, I just said it, that an inspector from the All Around Maintenance, supposedly from the bank, was there this afternoon. Maybe something has gotten started, I don't know. I am not waiting four years to have something done. Something needs to be done with these banks.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
We've heard about this house before. I think we've asked staff before, we'll ask it again.
Yes.
What is going on out there that this can't get taken care of and that these folks are having to come down and talk to the City Council about it? There is something wrong, and I hope we can get this taken care of a little more expeditiously. I think it's terrible that they've had to come again, although they got a really interesting meeting tonight. Scott Lloyd.
Hi, my name is Scott Lloyd. I live at 3790 Wilton Avenue Northeast. I live just down the street from these folks here. And I'm basically here to support the same things going on. The, we live on the corner of Coral Avenue and Wilton. And I don't know if you, you know, our ward person right here, I don't know if you've been down there much and have seen what's going on, but every day there is virtually a half a dozen homeless RV people that live up and down the street. Well, and you call code enforcement and stuff like that, and what happens is, is they say, "Well, how long have they been there?" "Well, have they been there 72 hours?" Okay, well, then they can come down, they can write it, they can put a tag on their vehicle. There's no penalty involved, there's no repercussions for what they do. So what they do is, then after 72 hours, they make them leave. The only problem is, is the last time we called, it took them two and a half weeks to come down and put a tag on a vehicle. So that person basically sat there for almost three weeks before they finally had to move. Well, what do they do? They move a block and a half down. And then after they're gone, then they move from that place, they get chased off there, they come to another place, they come to another place, next we know, a month and a half later, they're back in front of our place again. And it's just a never-ending cycle. There's, and, you know, the people, it's like she says, they literally, they urinate in a can, open the door, fling it out into the trees, under the bushes, onto the fences, they don't care. They just don't care, and they're, and whatever else is going on there, I don't know, but it's just, it's just getting out of hand. I've got an 11-year-old daughter that I have, and I'm afraid to let her go out in the front of the house most of the time. I don't know, I don't know what else to, I just don't know what else to do. I'm hoping that they can find a place to put these people, to help them more. I don't know if that's what it's going to take. I don't know if it's going to take a fine. You know, the first time these people get caught in the streets like this, they warn and say, "Next time we catch you back here, we're going to fine you. The third time we do it, we're going to, we're going to take your vehicle." And I think that's basically what it's going to take to get them to move along to some other neighborhood and let somebody else babysit them for the next few years.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lloyd. We will continue to, I figure this one out. Gary Kaidot. See?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, my name is Gary Kaidot. I'm Jan's husband. Where we live is, I've been there 50-some years, and it just, it's went downhill immensely. I mean, the house behind us, I mean, when you've got people kicking the doors and breaking windows, I went over, I check it every day to make sure there isn't somebody in there. I go over there, one day after two, I'm out with big bags of stuff out of the house. I go over there, make sure the door's locked, it's open. So I reach in, I lock the front door and shut the door. Five minutes later, out comes another guy with a great big bag of garbage. He was in that house while I was locking the house up. I mean, something needs to be done with that house. It's been a month since we were here, nothing's been done. The police or somebody, the police can't go on the property, and code enforcement can't go on the property. The only one to go on the property is me, which I'm probably trespassing, and the people that are breaking in and stealing stuff. They're the only ones that can go in. The police say they can't go on the property, code enforcement says, "Well, we can come on over on your yard and look at the property." Well, I look at it every day, it's a s-hole, as far as I'm concerned. Something needs to be done. That's what you guys are here for. I appreciate you doing something.
Thank you. Sorry you had to come down here again. Chris Estes. Chris gave up on us, eh? Yeah, okay. Same issue, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And drugs.
And drugs. Okay. Anyone else? Okay. We're adjourned.